Thing here done and then we'll, we'll start right with you guys.
Mr. Heats, did you have anything that you wanted to say also? We're asking.
Pardon me?
Was there anything that you wanted to say while you were here also? Because we can hold the sign up sheet.
Not necessarily. The mayor invited me down for the event. So that's why I'm here.
All right, well, we'll move on here with the, with the Kings then.
Sure?
Yep.
All right. You want to come up there?
Yes, I mean, yeah, if you want to stand just by the microphone, I mean, just so, right, right there.
No, I'm, I'm loud.
Yeah, I was gonna say, whoa, yeah.
Hello to everybody. Some of you have known me, I'm Sean Morfield. I'm the owner of the Pixar Kings, the youth football team, the, uh, how we got the field. I've been, uh, here the last two years that asked could we use the field? And I cut right to it. Mike informed me that, um, it was voted that we would not be able to use the, the field anymore. And then he let me know that there would be a meeting and I thought that was a great opportunity because the email didn't say any reason why we're not allowed to use the field anymore. And I was just looking at it like, uh, we did what we said we was gonna do when we first came into the community. I didn't hold no punches when I met with Mike and Chief. I said we were gonna move thousands of people into the city, um, on our game days, in and out, and that's what happened. I told him it was gonna be more people than it was used to and that's what happened. This past season, we had all the kids in the neighborhood, pretty much almost all of them, and we had them for seven months out of the year. So, uh, my question is, you know, what was the deciding factor to decide that, you know, we should no longer be here?
So there was very, a lot of factors, actually.
Okay.
The main, the biggest, one of the biggest ones is, I don't know if you're familiar, but we, we have a, a large grant and everything that's coming in for this field that we're gonna be doing a lot of renovations and, and so on and so forth that, um, it's just gonna, it's gonna cause a lot of unneeded interruptions to have a, you know, a steady event on the field per se. In conjunction with some other issues that, you know, maybe that we had with the borough as far as like some toiletries and stuff, such and such, um, that we had to, um, put out expenses on our end, on our side to, to fix during the season of football. So with every, with everything that's just compiling together, we, we figured that this year was not a good year to have you back and, and then start telling you, well, we can't have you here this week. We can't have you here this week, you know what I mean? Like, so we would, we just pushed it off as a, a no go for this year and due to all those factors.
Okay. Because how, how, it, it just came out like, yeah, you won't be back.
Yeah, grants are a unknown thing.
And that, and, and I'm looking at it like, hold on, we really haven't asked the borough to, to do anything for us or anything and we will buy it by any rule. Now, as far as, you know, bathroom issues, as far as I'm understanding, the building has been had plumbing issues. So, so that, that really had nothing to do with us as far as the plumbing issues that the building been had. Now, some of the cleanliness issues that had to do with us, of course, because we was occupying it. But, you know, it's a little, it's a little tough to keep up with that many people when you try to.
Oh, understandable, yeah.
The cleanliness, but also because of that issue, we made some changes in our, you know, in the heads of our program and everything like that because some of the things didn't go as it should. But I was like, I felt like we had a pretty good relationship.
Yeah, no, we hold no ill will and.
You know, we take care of the kids and we take care of the community to be, sorry. And we, and, you know, I'm like, the businesses love us. We bring, you know, we bring a lot of business to the neighborhood and we, and we spend a lot of money with the other businesses, so.
It was a tough decision on our end.
I was just like, what is going on?
It was one that we had to make on both sides of, you know, the business side of it, but also the feasibility side of it with what we're gonna be having going on and what, like you said, we have outdated stuff. We're working on trying to get that stuff fixed. So we can't just, you know, we can't have too much, you know, steady events and stuff like that that are gonna be, and I, you know how long football season is. It's not something that you can just, all right, I'm gonna cancel this time, I'm gonna cancel.
No, we've been working together whenever there's been something, we just.
Yeah, and it's a long term, this, 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 this is a whole thing, this isn't.
Trust me, I, I, me and Mike talked about it, he's very.
He's probably real open with.
He's pretty good with communicating with me and as Mike get attached to, I'll just be like, oh, we'll just, we'll just go away.
Yeah, right.
There's really no issues there.
I just, we didn't want to approve something that we couldn't hold up on our end and, and then you come back and, and not be able to have what you need. And we know what, you know, we know what we wanna supply for you and we can't, at this time, we just can't do that, so.
Okay.
That, that was, that was the main reason. The other reasons, obviously, compiled in with, you know, plumbing and this, that, the other, but that was the main reason.
I wanted to, like I said, I wanted to make sure that it wasn't because we're being looked at as a terrible organization.
No, 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 no.
And it doesn't need to be around. And I'm like, hold on, did, did we, are we that bad?
No, no, ill will. And, and, and in the future, like, you can always come back to us and, and when we're done with these projects and stuff and try to request it again when it's over and done with. Because like I said, this is probably gonna be a year, if not multi-year, thing that we're doing with the field.
I've read all the stuff and I've seen, and I know the parking lot was being posed to.
Yeah, yeah.
Supposed to be done.
So that's the situation. I, I, I mean, if you have any other questions, I can answer them for you, but that's, for, for now, for this year, you can come back in the future and ask or you can, you know, ask questions about, you know, how far we are in the process. Our meetings are open to you anytime.
I think the question was pretty answered. I think though, the only thing that I wanted to kinda, like I speak on and forgot, my name is Ashley Morfield. This is my husband and I run the cheer programs out of the, um, the organization. But, uh, you kinda answered the question a little bit, but then I know you said that there was like some type of factors, other things.
Yes, a lot of things.
I was more so prepared to speak on some of the other things because I felt like, um, there were some things throughout this season that weren't necessarily, um, on us that we were, for lack of better words, I guess you could say blamed, but I don't wanna say that. But we had received a few different emails, um, saying that our organization was responsible for certain things and then once it was found out that it wasn't us, there was like no follow up. It was just kinda like the first message might be a little accusatory, like, hey, you guys locked people out the bathroom and then it would be like, oh, no, nevermind, it was somebody else. Or, you know, um, you guys had messed up the ceiling tiles in the concession stand. So what happened was when we opened up the concession stand, it was windy and literally the wind was blowing the towels and the first thing I did was grabbed my phone and I started videoing because it's not like we could stop it. But we've been accused of so many things that it always feels like we gotta hurry up and video it. So a lot of times when we got those types of emails, I've literally had footage where I could spin like, hey, here's a video of us not messing up the ceiling tile. Or here's a video of the plumbing backing up from the drain, you know? Or here's a video of us not locking people out. So it has, although we have enjoyed the partnership, I will say that like we, I, I was hoping that those things weren't on the list of why we weren't, because I was like, a lot of stuff I made sure to get footage of to be able to show like, hey, this is not us. Even like, I would take video of the kids cleaning up at the end of the games because some, once we came, we noticed that when we would clean up, we would leave, but if there are still members of the community on the basketball court or different things like that, we couldn't, we can't make them leave. So I would walk around and take a video of it being cleaned before we left because sometimes we'd get emails saying we left the basketball court dirty.
Right.
And it's like, no, we left about 10 kids in the basketball court that we weren't responsible for that live in the neighborhood and maybe they left the court. So I just didn't want those things to be a reason. And then the last thing was just that we, um, we had to put down a deposit, $250, I think it was. And we were told that if you have to call the police for any reason, then your check will be cashed. And so I just wanted, um, to say, this was last season and I, I wanted to say for the two years that we're here, we've never had the, we haven't had issues where we had to call the police.
No.
So that was like a hard thing to hear because when you are a child serving organization, that we don't charge much. Last year was actually our first year charging the kids anything. Typically, we're completely free. Last year, we charged $25. To have to say if we have an emergency, we need to be able to afford the authorities, like we should, like we don't, we, I would hope to caution the board to maybe, even in future, for any child serving organization that's on the field, they shouldn't have that bill of like, if there's a, an emergency where we need to call 911, we don't wanna have to be like, wait, can we afford this?
There would never be a charge in the case of an emergency.
Well, we were told that if we had to call the police for any reason.
I don't think they have a document written that survives, doesn't say that.
Yeah, it was more.
I would love to see the, the document.
There were several, there were several things because at the beginning, things weren't being cleaned.
Yeah, it was more of like a, and this is some, and this is something that is borough wide, whether you rent the park building or you rent Sugar Camp or any of our services, there are deposits on almost everything that we do.
Oh, we didn't man the deposit. We just thought, the way it was explained to us and, and I'm sure the document is there, was like for the use of, and like I said, we've never needed the police. We've always been, we've policed our own crowd, we have security and things like that. But that we weren't, we're used to deposits for renting the buildings.
That's mainly, yeah.
Cleanliness, but when it was attached to calling the police, it just kinda felt like, well, you don't ever wanna have that dilemma, so, you know.
Mike, Mike can, Mike has the document, he can double check it, make sure. It was most certainly not for emergency services. On the part of emergency services, we, we would never charge any kind of fee or anything like that and it would never delay in that case, so.
Yeah, so I mean, I think if you do, we definitely, we do that document because we, that was something that we had to consider and make sure, I mean, we, like I said, we always make sure we have security, but we knew like, you, it, it'll be a fee if the police had to be called, you know? So we just, you know, just thought that that's, that could be something for people to look into as well.
No, there is no ill will between organization and borough or anything of that nature. Like I said, I explained previously, the biggest reason is because of the issues that we've had with outdated things, you know, like plumbing and every. We finally got the grant and, and thanks to our engineer and everybody that put that together, um, to do things with this field and the surrounding area. So we're gonna do that and we don't want there to be any kind of, you know, interruptions for a long period of time and everything else. So that was probably where a lot of the vote came from. Um, and then obviously little issues and such and such may have, may have contributed, may have not. Like I can't, I can't speak for everybody, but, um, that's where we're at for this year. Um, and we, we feel, you can feel welcome to come back and, and ask us in, in, you know, future years, so. We thank you guys.
I mean.
Can I just quickly add, I'm sorry? We, we also wanted to tell you guys now so that gave you an opportunity to hopefully find another place to play for the season, which is why we wanted to tell you like so, you know, the end of this year, instead of waiting for the season's supposed to start.
What's the date for the project to start?
Excuse me?
What's the date for the project to start?
It, it all depends on when the taping company has time.
I was just, I was just asking, because if it's not gonna start till.
No, exactly spring.
Yeah, it's, it's like early, it's like, but, but with projects with this, like, it's, it's ongoing. So with COVID, after COVID hit, you never know when you're gonna get supplied.
It's at the mercy of the construction people, that's where I rest. And it would not be fair to you to schedule games or practices for us to have to, to say, hey, you can't come. That would not be fair to you.
I, I just wanted to say, I don't know if y'all remember, there was a shooting across the street, um, this summer. Yeah. I, I don't know what the street is called, the hill. The hill. There was a shooting there, but we had a, a game there. There, it was packed down there.
Yeah.
And we had, you know, everybody running ducking and hiding. And we did not dial 911 because of the reason she stated before. We was like, we are, we are not calling, so like.
Other people did, so we felt like the same as the organization.
10 minutes later is when all the, you know, the police showed up and everything like that. But we was just like, nah, everybody, you know, we moved everybody away from where it was and.
Oh, we'll direct our, we'll direct our borough manager to look into the document for you.
Oh, I'm, I'm cool with that. I'm, I'm sure, I'm, was part of it, so.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, Betsy.
Okay, uh, I would like to introduce, uh, Michelle Chakis from, uh, our district in the county council and Brandon Markowsky, our representative in Harrisburg. Uh, and Jurole, would you mind standing?
Yeah, Jim, right?
Shall we just begin?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't, why don't you do a little bit of explanation there?
Yeah, she has a lot of.
All right. You know, I talk too much, Michelle. Michelle, big mistake. I was with Jim when, I think, the December 5th and we got to talking. It was his last day at the ARD and quote me if I'm wrong.
DUI.
Quote me if I'm, okay. He ended his career that afternoon. Well, then I started to dig into it and I thought, there's more to this guy. I've known him for a long time. So I went into it. Well, he, then I remembered, he was on the zoning board. Yeah, I called Mark Wallace. Well, he said, I went on in 87 and Jim was already chairman. When'd he get paid for that? Scared me. And I know, I talked to Danny and I talked to, uh, Pat Eaves, his son-in-law, who filled me in, the true life member of number two fire hall, true life member of Camp B. So he started as a camper, uh, then were a counselor and a cook. I mean, that's a lot of community service plus the $39 you make here. And R B P's a family. So I called Michelle, the secretary at the county and, uh, she asked for information and she said, uh, yeah, we can do a proclamation. And then I called Brandon's office, he was in Harrisburg. And your, um, Mary Beth wanted to do a proclamation. I said, no, I don't want a proclamation from the state. He worked for the county. So I'm sorry I turned you down on that. So Brandon, that's on you now, you can have the next one. So the secretary said, well, what can I bring? I said, well, don't bring a flag. So Michelle here is here to read the proclamation, which I think you partly deserve and I'm sure we all would agree because we've all been with you, Jim, in one facet or the other. So his family is here, his wife is flattered and his grandchildren. Pat Eaves is here from, well, emergency management, number two fire hall. Anything else you care to add, Mr. Eaves?
Well, just that Jim and I started in, what, 1973?
I was before that.
Well, you were before that, that's right. I forget, you're a few years older than me, I forgot.
1968, probably.
1968. So I came along in 73 and, uh, I got to hang out with some great characters up at the relief fire company number two, uh, like Jock McCreary, uh, Dick Walton. And, uh, we were the, of the generation our age that, uh, we would have fun at those meetings. We would go across the street at Gillon's Store, for those that remember Gillon's Store, and get a bag of penny candy and then walk over, sit in the back and then we would heckle the older guys in there that was running the meeting, like Burl Bergman, those who remember Burl Bergman. He used to chew on his glasses and then Frank Broder would whistle when they'd get excited. And here would be me, Jimmy, Jock, all of us in the back, we're cracking jokes and they're getting mad at us. So that's, that's what we started with. Jimmy was one of the guys that, uh, brought me and Tony Sivatryx in uh, because they wanted to lower the age. Back then in Pickaran and most volunteer fire companies, it was 21 years old you had to be. And when they were, the, the, the whole country was starting to lower, uh, the age, you know, for participation and signing contracts and things, uh, the Scheffler brothers and Jimmy and some of the other guys, knowing that they were close in, in, in our age, they wanted to lower that. So they were, they were, that guy right there is one of the ones that was involved in that. So great job. Great job.
I did my way here from, uh, our turn today and he's injured his back, so he was gonna join you. But, uh, he's, I bet you, I just can't, I, I, I'm not walking to one. Okay, yours, yours. But anyhow, thank you, Jim, for your service.
Thank you for inviting me. It is an honor to stand before all of you and to be here in your presence, Mr. Rulo, for this wonderful proclamation. A proclamation honoring James Jim Rulo. Whereas I don't know what the destiny will be, but one thing I do know, the only ones among you who will be really happy are those who have sought and found how to serve. That quote by French philosopher Albert Schweitzer personifies the true essences of James Jim Rulo's character in his years devoted to the borough of Pickaran. Whereas Mr. Rulo served as a council member for the borough of Pickaran for 12 years because of his leadership, confidence and community presence. He has served as council president in 2022 and 2023 and as well as vice president in 2024. And whereas as a lifelong resident of Pickaran and former graduate of Gateway High School and Point Park College, Mr. Rulo has spent his entire career with Allegheny County. First on the parole board and lastly helping to develop and start the D A R D program for Pennsylvania. And whereas, aside from being a council member, Mr. Rulo has deeply involved in, has been deeply involved in the Pickaran community. He is a life member of Pickaran Fire Company number two and served on the Pickaran zoning hearing board for over three decades and is chairman. And whereas Mr. Rulo is also a Pickaran Camp B life member, as a camper and later a counselor and cook, he is also a softball coach in the community and a national guard. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Allegheny County Council Member Michelle Macarady Chakis do hereby recognize James Jim Rulo for his contributions to the borough of Pickaran and to the enhancement of the well-being of its citizens. Mr. Rulo always acted in the best interests of the borough's citizens and his unwavering commitment to council serves as an exemplary model of leadership. This council thanks him for his many years of dedicated public service and we wish him well as he moves on to his future endeavors. Congratulations.
Speech? You have anything to say, Jim?
No, I'm, I'm. Thank you for the honor. It's a great honor.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you all. Mike, thank you. Yes, we're on top, so we can finish on our act. Chief?
Jim.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
The, the police and the fire station, um, actually helped us with our interest. Yeah. We do brand entrances, so the police and the fire station helped us with our brand entrances, so. Anytime from us. Thanks, thank you very much. Man, it was awesome. Yep. Appreciate you. All right, thank you, Jim, for your service. Thank you all for coming. If you would like to stay for the meeting, you're more than welcome.
I was only here for the important.
Okay. Thanks for sharing the thought. Thank you.
Hi, Brandon, I'm Michelle. Thanks for coming.
Thanks, sir.
I'm glad you didn't bring mine and Jock's nickname, bro.
You're one of those, my uncle Scoochie, he used to.
Scoochie Smith.
All right, Betsy, you wanna just, uh, continue with your report?
Yeah. The Pickaran Police worked 109 complaints, uh, in the month of December. We collected a hundred dollars in, uh, our fines. Just another hundred a day for a ticket on Highland and Fifth for $25. What's the word?
What's that?
Four, four things that was written up for us. We got a hundred, another hundred dollars for next month. Uh, $504 from the state, a hundred from Normandy, uh, nothing from our magistrate, 935 from the county and no quality of luck. Also, uh, I think with all that's going on in the country, the one thing that really would ring in my mind, if you see something, say something. Because there's so much going on and people say things and they don't report. And I think that really should ring in all of our minds. Also, the state mayors association and, uh, the state senate so far, it's like, if you remember Bells Across America, well, um, international holocaust remembering state and it goes on to how many were killed. In November of '05, uh, the general assembly, the, that, uh, United Nations General Assembly marked the 60th anniversary. And so January 27th is the, uh, resolution that the House of Representatives have adopted. And so it's called Holocaust Across Our Common Bill. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Bets. Personnel, um, I guess I'll read for Dom. Can I do a motion to approve the attendance at Allegheny County League of Municipalities Spring Educational Conference, April 3rd through the 6th, 2025?
Second.
All right, motion made second, any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the attendance at the Allegheny County Boroughs Association Dinner at the Rivers Casino, February 1st, 2025?
Second.
Motion made second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And a motion to approve the attendance at the Turtle Creek Valley Cog, um, annual dinner meeting at Edgewood Country Club, February 28th?
Second.
Motion made second, any questions?
Yes, Mike, when do you need to know for, please?
She, they haven't sent out the invitations yet. I just found out that it was the, the 28th last week.
Okay. In Seven Springs, that had to be, or, I'm sorry, not Seven Springs, the, uh, casino, that, did that have to be already?
That's already in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And that is all under personnel. I guess I'll, uh, read for George as well. Uh, motion to advertise ordinance 1057 on street handy, on street handicap parking spaces.
Second.
Question?
Go ahead.
Exactly what is that? Because we already have on street.
Well, any, any ordinance, uh, Betsy brought this to my attention and I looked through the ordinance. In any ordinance, the only thing we have spelled out is what council can do to put a handicap parking space in our parking lots. There's nothing for on-street, so, um, Betsy's very, uh, vigilant in checking handicap expiration rates and we had to pull a couple of signs last, um, last month. And just so we don't get into a jam, somebody asked us why we're taking your sign. We wanted to make sure we had the, uh, the process for on-street parking.
Thank you, Mike.
We are not allowed, if I'm correct, we are not allowed to deny, we can't, we can't harness that power?
No, we can't, but if, we can deny?
Uh, the ordinance you had, did that give you the one that we used in Westy? That was part of a federal lawsuit.
If they have a document.
Alternate ordinance.
Okay.
You can sort of table.
They had a document to their doctor.
You want, you, anybody wanna consider tabling this until this listener?
Yes.
I'll, I'll tell you why. When Westy was involved in the lawsuit, we had these, you know, we, we had a, uh, an ordinance that was pretty similar to a lot of ordinances out there. And it, it allowed the police to look to make sure that they needed a space. For example, if they had an alternate space and some people did, uh, they would, and it also limited the number that could be on the street.
That's what I was thought.
There was a federal lawsuit and we came to a, a, a resolution with the, um, federal, it was HUD, I believe, that filed the suit. And we put together an ordinance that they're using nationally as a, as, as a, uh, well, it, it sets out how you can limit the number on the street because, you know, obviously if everybody in the street wanted a handicap parking spot, you can't do it. So it, it set parameters and everything. So I'd like to look at what you have and compare it to the one, like I said, Westy went through along, but luckily the insurance company was involved too. But it's been, like I said, literally, HUD, HUD attorneys are using it nationwide as a template.
All right, I rescind my motion.
Well, you can just table, just table.
I'll do a motion to table the ordinance 1057 for on-street handicap parking spaces. Any questions? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That'll be it. Parks and Rec, Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to purchase a new range for the park building at the cost of $14,500. We will use the ARCA funds and a donation from the Pitt Karen Moms Club to pay for it.
Question. I saw that you sent out.
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry. I saw that you sent out different quotes for different types, and there was one that looked like there was a nice stove, but then there was like a tabletop with a.
That was the gas stove. That's just the way that he sent the, he sent the quote, because originally he told me that the gas was cheaper, which of course is, but when you factor in all the costs, we would have to do the change to put gas in, it's really cost prohibitive to put gas in.
Okay.
So you really just needed to look at the two, the cost of your electric range.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion has been seconded. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I would also, it's not on the agenda, but I don't think I need a vote support, is to pick the date for the next night market. We would like to have people 25th. If that is okay with everybody else.
People 25th?
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Finance and Economic Development Bill?
Motion to pay bills as presented.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Motion to reappoint the POCO and POCO Association as auditors for the, for the audit here 2024, including submission of necessary reports to the D C E D and complying, compiling financial statements at the cost of $10,500.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any questions on that?
Nothing on the price?
Yeah, it's the same as last year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to pass Resolution 1-2025, increasing the fee for lien letters, tax certifications, and non-sufficient fund payments.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any questions on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Health and Welfare, Deb?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Turner submitted his reports to council, and I also like to remind everybody that once the snow stops, you have 24 hours to shovel your sidewalk and clear a path. And that's all, Mr. President.
Amen. Electric, electric, I have nothing.
I just go out.
Public Safety, Jim?
I'd like to make a motion to hire Diane Burkhart as a part-time crossing guard at the mayor's recommendation.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I just have one question. Out in the old Bacchus property, did they put the cement and everything down? Who's responsible for all the cones and the trash bin?
The dumpster's still there?
Yeah.
They just, we just signed a report, the pollution report, and Dawn can give you more detail on that, and then I just would come and get it.
Are the cones ours or are the cones the company's?
I don't know if the cones are ours or if they, they put them up. If they're ours, I can't imagine our guys would be leaving them there at all. But I could double check.
They've been up for a while.
Yeah.
If nobody claims them, we can, we can take them.
Somebody claims them, I know somebody that needs them.
New hire may, maybe the one who put them there, they may just be coming together when they get their dumpster.
Yeah, I was kind of surprised that they, because it was the sidewalk that basically blocking it off. So I thought maybe they just put it there for the, when they were doing the cement, and they were going to come back a couple of days after the cement was settled.
Yeah, well, we had caution tape up, and our guys put up the caution tape, and that's why I don't think they covered their ours.
Yeah, so.
Mike, it's subtle there too. Need subtle.
Yeah, that's.
We can find the Bacchus building.
Yeah.
Anything else, Jim?
I just want to thank everybody for the surprise today, it really was a shock. I thank you all.
Ah, thank you. Solicitors' report.
Just want to tell Deb, I cleared my sidewalks five times.
Yes, for sure.
I'm welcoming below the warm. The lawsuit was filed by Klein, they had, they filed an amended complaint, so we're just moving forward with that.
All right. Thank you. Engineers' report.
Yes, I received my engineer's report. Again, wanted to thank you for the patience with some of our construction projects. I think everything turned out good, we're just going through punch lists, but now we got to prepare ourselves for our next round of construction projects. I would like to talk for a minute, because you might, you might see a driller out there to sort of know what's going on. Kind of refresh your memories, it's been a while since I talked about it, but we have a big grant out there for the Highland Avenue sewer. We looked at putting a traditional sewer down the hill last year, beginning of the construction season, and the contractor, we might look at a lot of concerns because of the instability of the slope. So then we started looking at, okay, what's, what's it look like for the sewer to go down Center Avenue, which we certainly could, but we weren't, we weren't thrilled about cutting through that street due to the instability issues we had. So then we got the idea of what's called a horizontal HCD drilling, which is horizontal directional drilling, and what this is going to look like, and this is the avenue where we think it's going to be best for everyone, is you would have like a, a big drilling machine set up there at the park, and we would start drilling a new sewer from Highland Avenue down the hill, so that you wouldn't have to do traditional trench excavation, and the sewer would just, would just come from behind it. In order to do that, we need, we met with a geotechnical engineer, Garvin Barbico, who's the same engineer, we got involved with the Center and Hillside when we did it, so they're familiar, they're familiar with the borough, they do nice work. They need to do a test boring every hundred feet going down the hill, so we can see what kind of material we are, because the specialty contractor that's going to do the drilling needs that information in order to build their bid. So as soon as the weather hits, where it all breaks, you know, you're going to see a, a geotechnical drilling machine out there that, that drill these holes every hundred feet so that we can put this bid together. So in case you see something, I just wanted to let you know. My understanding is that, unless you tell me else was, my understanding is that we own all the property, when I say we own Pitt Karen, so we don't need any right of ways to be up there.
I, I believe we do at the top, but double check that.
Yeah. But we're going to be moving on this project this summer, so I'd like to get all the design work done in these next couple of months, so that hopefully when the, when the weather breaks in spring, we can, we can put this out on the street, and it will be a specialty contractor, so it'll take the form of a design-built type contract, but I, I think this is the way to go. Now, if they come back to me and tell, you know, to tell me that based on the test boring, that there's going to be any sort of extraordinary cost, then we'll re-explore it and try and go a different direction. But I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about the Highland sewer, and then we obviously already talked about the park a little bit. We have that coming up, and then the jewelway improvements, we're actually meeting with Riley from the county this week to, she wants to kick off that project so that we can start thinking about paving jewelway.
So on these test holes, what's the diameter that's going to be drilled in? About?
Probably about four inches.
Okay, so they'll be filled after?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you won't be able to fill.
Okay.
Yeah, but they'll, they'll be gone as soon as they do.
That's for a shambles, for the stability of the ground.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I have five million questions, of course. Is it going to go straight down from where it's, where the manhole is put now?
The interesting thing is if we drill the hole, okay, like the manhole did, it doesn't necessarily have to fall over the sewer as now. If you remember, if you remember like three, four years ago, when we had to dig up the park to cut the break?
Oh, yeah.
The big hole. The big problem was we had to try and find the sewer, we couldn't, couldn't find it, when I say we, the contractor couldn't find it. If we're drilling a new sewer, we can pick the line, the best alignment going down the hill if we want to, we just have to hit the manholes. So rather than trying to trench into the existing sewer.
Oh, yeah.
The, the new sewer isn't going to be anywhere near as deep, there would be no reason to.
Right.
It just has to be more shallow than Highland.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, and at the time, my, my best guess, and obviously I wasn't here, but we, we tried to do some historical research, and my best guess is when they put that sewer in, that park wasn't there yet, and then they filled in all above it, you know what I mean? And that's why the sewer's so deep. We won't have to go down nearly as far, we'll only be six feet below, below the surface.
We're going to talk into that other line.
Well, that's a question. Where's that, is it going to go down Taylor Avenue or no?
Close to Taylor Avenue. Yeah. They'll go through that, through that whole region. There's manholes, we'll try and then, we might, we might have to place a couple of new manholes.
That being a dump previously, is that going to?
That's why, that's what the problem was, with the open trench.
Okay.
Because, you know, traditionally, if you open trench something, it's, it's the most economic route, but the contractors that went last year were very concerned about the instability of, of, of the slope, so it wasn't going to be the cheapest route, which is why we started talking about center.
Does that mean we'll leave the old sewer line?
Yeah, we'll ban it.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Dawn?
No, that's all.
One other question, Dawn, and it's with the gas lines in town. Seems like the gas companies, they're digging up everywhere. How old are our gas lines in Pitt Karen?
Question for people. Because they, they replaced so much, they replaced everything on second and everything on third. I think it was around 2008, 2009, they did Creighton Avenue in front of my house, and that's the problem they're having on 10th Street right now, with water infiltration, the gas being erupted, and they've been out there repairing it. So, yeah.
Well, not to cut anybody off, but that's starting to be an issue all over the hill now, because it's starting on A Street. Now, there's three houses that got water in their lives on A Street. So it, it's getting to be a real problem.
No, I mean, you figure Coleman out in '63, '64, so some gas lines have the, it could be the originals.
Yeah. I'm sure they are.
I would, I don't know, because, you know, Pitt Karen doesn't really have anything to do with gas lines, I would guess they're very old. Poor shape, they're probably, they're probably, you know, they're certainly not plastic.
Give the line a chance.
That's why water getting ruined, because they're, they're corroded or all stuff like that, and, and so, so I know the gas companies, and this isn't specific to Pitt Karen, but this is throughout the whole region, have been challenged by PUC to replace anything aging like that, and they have what they call an ELTA program, which I think stands for Long Term Infrastructure Replacement Program, where they commit to the PUC to replace so many miles of line every year, and I'm sure that's probably what you're following with them. So they're just, they're trying, they're trying to get rid of all their old metal pipe.
All right.
Or a manager's report?
All right, the real estate tax collected in December is $19,512.99. Total for the year was $493,470. Capital improvement account has $258,291. The electric system capital improvement has $153,427. Liquid fuels currently has $56,026. Liquid fuel CD has $39,915. The dirty camp run fund has $71,845. The sewer capital fund has $901,406. The public safety fund has $99,011. ARCA funds is $28,996. The bond and payment fund is $335,136. And the ARCA rec account has $9,556. Just a couple of quick budget highlights, I don't have everything, the last payroll year wasn't put in, so I don't want to give you good numbers on the, on the expenditure side, but we did collect over $84,000 in interest with that change we made two years ago. Overall, the real estate tax collection, we collected $19,000 more than we budgeted for, and the earned income tax, we were over $42,000, so it's.
That's great.
People in Pitt Karen are working. I met with the Allegheny County Health Department officials on that Clean Air Grant that we got for the, for the equipment. The representative from Steel came down and met with us, and he gave us a lot of good pricing, since we're buying a big bulk order, so we're getting more equipment for the money stretching those grant dollars. He gave us a better price on the riding mower. I think we were originally quoted $32,000, he gave us a price of $26,000. The downside to this grant is we have to destroy everything we replace. So, well, the, the John Deere mower is over 10 years old, we're not going to destroy it, we can sell it, we just can't sell it. We can't sell it in Allegheny County. We have several broken chainsaws that were being replaced, so that doesn't really matter, and we have several old weed whackers, the guys have just kept, even though they don't use them, so we're going to.
For parts?
Get by.
Swiping gun.
So if anybody has a, has an old gas one laying around the house, we can, we can put, put out, and then we did receive a, a certificate from the, an award of excellence from DAC Bond, that's who we report all our financial information to every year, since we've had this bond, so for five years, they recognized us for excellence and reporting.
Frame it up.
Yeah.
Make some of our money, here you go.
The difference in the gas on 10th Street with water infiltration, our guys, the water company came out last week because we thought it was a water line break, they tested the water, it is water, but it's dirty water, so our guys checked our sewer line, and we have a crack in the sewer line on Pitt Karen Avenue, but they think that's the water that's infiltrating the gas line. And so I talked to Dawn a little bit about that earlier, and we're going to look into getting that fixed.
And then like this is interesting, because Ann Price always complained, and she's been deceased a while.
Good, now that.
This is over on the 700 block of 10th, so it's, it's nowhere near Ann's, Ann's house.
Pushing plant.
And that's, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Police chief report?
Yeah, I got a couple of things, actually. Officer Trunzo is finally back after almost a year of being off, being sick. He had cancer, you know, that thing.
Glad to hear that.
Yeah, he's back. We also offered a civil service exam, Mike posted for us, got it, got it out there, we had two guys take it. We actually need a vampire desperately. I don't know if you guys have been listening, but there's been a lot of sirens going on lately, a lot, you know? Just to do some highlights real quick, since January, it's only been 13 days, we had three vehicle pursuits, all three suspects were caught, there was three dog apprehensions in these suspects, there was a stabbing, the individual was arrested, a shooting, they was arrested, an assault with a hammer, they was arrested. Even though the coboy dropped dramatically, it's about over 300% violence increase. So we're just going to keep plugging at it, keep working at it, like I said, the cob volume is down, but we need to get more vampire in here. Fire department, I'd like to thank them, they've been doing a lot, they've been extremely busy too, just as well as us. It ain't just one entity, so is EMS, it's like for some reason, since January 1, fire and S and police have been through their roof, and that ain't only here, that's from here in the city, that I know I can speak of, because I listen. I just wanted to put it out there. Also, there's a big chance Max and I are going to St. Louis, Missouri for internationals and national from April 7th, April 11th, we're going to enter some competitions, and I think Max is definitely going to be in the top dog, I know he's going to be in the top dog. So just wanted to put it out there, that's all.
Did he get his tooth fixed?
Actually, now that you mention that, the FedEx dropped the ball. Mike, by the way, remember I told you he was supposed to get it done? He, FedEx sent it to the wrong place.
He's missing his tooth.